Call the meeting to order. Calling. Calling this special meeting of the Board of Selectmen, April fourteenth at four forty-five to order. And our first quarter of business is the five-year capital plan. So as you both know, for finance. Asked us to make some cuts at a minimum of hundred and forty thousand dollars. I, after the meeting Barbara and I. Since we were there, we decided to just, and she's not in on Thursdays, so we decided just to sit there. While we were. In the same room and we hacked awayed a bunch of stuff. And she was able to redo the math in the spreadsheet with a bunch of cuts. But starting with the capital plan. Is there?
That was not included in the but and. Packet.
I'm sorry. Oh, the capital. I have it. I can put it on screen share if you like.
Yeah, that's good.
Can you see that?
Okay.
No, I think you're look, are you looking at? Yeah, you're looking at the capital. Sorry, I have two monitors. Is that big enough that you can see? Okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Where we have below revow because we don't need to look at the board of bed. Okay.
So just going down. We'll start with. We'll just start here. And Rick's on the call. He's got some projects, some fleet. In that. You know that. I'm sorry. Hang on one second. Confusing myself. Roads. Well, Rick, you can, do you want to hop in here? Is there anything that you would feel comfortable moving out? And again, we're, this is just discussion. We haven't made any motions yet.
Boris put on this separate. I'm trying to see which road is the two fifty on the.
Oh, on the, this is the one with the second. Yeah, sorry about that. Here you go. This is at the second Spooner Hill.
Yep, second half of Squarrel.
Really makes sense to.
To work, but we're look, we're only going to be looking really at fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Right? And didn't they? Proposed to kick the hundred and fifty out from.
Right, so they, yeah, it's not, it's this, this is the column that we would be looking at Rufus.
Year twenty-seven is the new stuff that came in this year and whenever you take out there, you're only taking out one fifth of. One fifth of that will be what the appropriation will be deducted. So by moving that hundred and fifty last night, they only took thirty thousand bottom line of the budget.
We can move on to the operating budget if you all want to move, move on to that.
There's, can you, can you actually, because this is without seeing the whole thing, can you actually send this to us?
Sure. Um, it, you know, where it, you can also find it Rufus is in that. Starred folder. Or the, you know, it's in the capital plan. Folder that Barbara has shared with us, but I'm, I'll send it also.
Let me look, see if I can find it.
I just sent it. Barbara and I did focus more on the operating budget last night. And Donna put in the chat, just as an FYI, any changes to the capital plan will have to be readdressed by the P and Z Commission and their meeting is tonight. So it's probably best for us just to go over to the operating budget.
Can I just, just bring up one, one point on the capital, the, the master plan for Park and Rec that that twenty-five thousand? Is that something we should look at?
In terms of what? Putting it off?
Putting it off.
Well. Our parts are in terrible shape. And. There. You know, there's a good chance that we're not even going to be able to use Emory. This year, we need to have a plan. I would advise against putting it off.
Okay.
That's just my opinion here.
Just thought, but we just thought we could look at that. And if, and if, and just to get this right, so if we, if we were to take that off. For that year, so one fifth of that, so five thousand would come off of the hundred and forty that we need to look at. That's how this works. One fifth.
We have to get confirmation from Barbara, but I'm pretty sure Rick is correct.
That's correct, but to Donna's, to Donna's point, you have to send it back to P and Z then.
Right. So it, I think it makes sense for us just to go over the operating budget. And I have a whole spreadsheet. That. Barbara and I worked on last night that I can share.
So let's move on to that.
All right, so you guys see a Excel spreadsheet says twenty-two, twenty-three budget potential reductions?
Yes.
Okay. So. Um, this is basically what Barbara and I worked on last night. Here is, this is just to give you a quick overview. This is the detail. But this here. That I just highlighted was the Board of Finance ask. And this is sort of the summary rollup of this detail. So. Bear with me to just go through this. This includes the line that the reduction. Occurs on, I added in the department and then what the action is. And then how much the reduction is. So on line fifty-eight in the ROV budget, the registrar of voters budget. The, this proposal is to reduce the ROV hours to the current budgeted number of hours. I have a little typo there. Look at that. And that's a savings of seven thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars. So they were their request. This currently they do three hours a week and a hundred and nine extra hours that are election related. Their proposed was four hours a week, and this is per registrar, so two registrars. And a hundred and twenty-five additional hours, so that this proposal is to leave it at the current. Plan. And then the deputies. They are currently at a hundred hours a year each to deputies. They propose two hundred. Per deputy. Part of this is. Sorry, if. Line fifty-nine. No, 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 I'm sorry. We're still on line fifty-eight. The deputies is to leave it at that hundred. Hours a year. And then the. Workers on line fifty-nine, they're. They have a hundred and ninety-eight hours total budgeted. Currently for this year, they were proposing seven hundred and fifty-four hours total. So this proposal is to put it back to that hundred and ninety-eight. For a savings of eight thousand ninety dollars. This one.
This year though, Jean, they have two elections. Next year they're thinking of three. So that part of those increases were to deal with a third election.
Yep, and Darlene had mentioned the, with the passing of the bill, we'll likely see more absentee ballots, which would take the. Some hours off of the, those in-person elections. So, and this is just, I'm, this is just a. First pass what Barbara and I worked on last night as a starting point.
And I, if I can jump in, I just want to clarify as well that the registrars budgeted. Extra hours in this current fiscal year to do a door-to-door canvas. So those hours. Were already inflated from. Regular working hours. So the theory is that with those extra hours, that would be enough to handle the election work.
Um, then taking, they wanted to increase their supply line by twenty-five hundred dollars, but we. Put it back at six thousand dollars. And then going down to line one oh six for the tax collector. In looking at it, the year-to-date this year, average weekly number of weekly, of number of hours weekly, pardon me. Is eight point nine, so we had, that was proposed at fourteen hours a week. So putting it back at the ten hours provides a reduction of seven thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars. Uh, the attorney fees on line two one seven. We flat funded that. At. Sorry.
Twenty-five.
Right, at twenty-five thousand. Uh, we flat funded the Cemetery Association because. They also have submitted a request through the ARPA Needs Assessment Committee. Um, same thing with Shore Service under grants. We flat funded that because they also made a submission request to the ARPA Needs Assessment Committee. Going down to two fifty-seven, Public Safety. The Police Protection. We reduced that to what desk sent us plus the overtime. Um. And phone, so that was a reduction of five thousand dollars. We reduced the EMS staffing on line two fifty-eight. To their current projection, reducing that ninety-five thousand dollars. So that was a big number. On line two sixty, we reduced the emergency management line to only fund the software. Taking out twelve thousand two hundred dollars. On line two seventy-one. Under DPW, we removed, there's a halftime position in with the salaries. And that was a reduction of thirty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars. Line three twenty-two under the Welcome Center. Um, closing that for five months from January one to May one would be a reduction in eight thousand dollars. And the Park and Rec three thirty-two park maintenance reduction, we reduced that. Twenty-five, I'm sorry, we reduced that.
We just removed the twenty-five thousand they had put in for drainage.
Right.
Because they also are applying for ARPA. Funding and they have it in capital. It seems to be a little bit all over the place, so we took that out.
So that. Equaled a total reduction of two hundred and thirty-four thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars. So, and you can see that's rolled up over here. Showing the. That's the, here we have the new. Um, total and then total reduction for everything.
That's well beyond what they asked for.
Yep. We were digging deep.
Has the halftime position for DPW already been filled? Was that already a job?
No, that was for hire and extra help now. Now and then whenever needed, whether winter or summer.
Sort of an, sort of an as needed.
Well, I don't, I don't think we have to be as draconian as this. I mean, I had gone through the budget. I think there's in almost every. Department you can take. You know, between a thousand and five hundred dollars here and there. Different lines. I did not. Really touch the. Register of Voters. Like you guys did. Um.
Yeah, we were really trying to. Find. You know, substantial numbers, not to, you know, take two hundred and fifty dollars out of a supply line or, I mean, the budgets, so many of the budgets are so incredibly tight already. Do you want to sort of go through these and have a conversation? And then. Rufus and Glenn, did you have? Glenn, did you have sort of suggestions? Do we want to sort of toss in those suggestions while we are going through?
I think, yeah, I mean, I, I've, I've got a list, but my, my bigger reductions, my bigger numbers. You know, they're, they're here, you know, so your line items actually align with mine. Um, I had some smaller reductions that, that, you know, that was neither here nor there, I think, with some of them. Uh, but these, these are, these are bigger than I. You know, than I, than I had imagined.
Can we go like block by block and just say? Each of us are peace?
Yeah, let's start at ROVs.
Okay.
And if we want, so this is a spreadsheet I can, you know, make changes if we want to sort of flesh out. You know, if we think that the line fifty-eight should only be reduced by half, let's say.
Well, let's look at, first, let's look at forty through fifty-six, the Board of Selectmen.
Actually, can I ask one question before we dive in here? So. You know, the motion last night was for a hundred and forty. And then there was a suggestion for a hundred and sixty. This is two thirty-four. And Rufus, you've already said that. This is a draconian number. Is, is there just, as we go through this, is there a general number that we can live with? Is there a general number that? That we would set, I mean, clearly we'd satisfy the, the Board of Finance with this number, but. Do, do we want to, I mean, do we think two hundred is, is, is the right number? I mean, Rufus in particular, what do you think?
I, I, I think we should look a little more carefully at every department. To some extent, I think this is, you know. Beyond, I was disappointed last night because. You know, they can suggest what they want. They overstepped their bounds when they started looking at individual line items at this stage of the game. Um, you know, that, their job last night was really to say. Here's the number that we want you to reduce. So we're looking at a hundred and forty to a hundred and sixty. And then they suggested the capital plan, removing the. Community house flooring out of, out of it. That's what I heard last night. So I, I don't see, I mean, I have some numbers here. That I kind of agree with. Mine are a little bit different. So I'd say we go department by department, say, you know, here, here's what I was thinking. And, and maybe keep our own notes and then we come back and say, okay. Here's where we're at. Okay. Um, I think they asked a lot of questions last night that. They should have already known the answers to. Or they weren't listening or whatever. I don't know. Although it was sort of a lopsided. Conversation.
Okay.
I mean, they had some members that. Hardly spoke at all, so I don't know what they were thinking.
Okay. And Jean, just a question for you. So as you were coming up with, with these numbers with Barbara. I mean, did. I mean, what, what was your thought, thought processes behind, process behind this? I mean, this, because this is, this is beyond even with the one sixty. Um, were you thinking that? That we could. That I, I, I don't know. I, I mean, I, I'm actually, I'm surprised actually by this number. So I just want to know what, what your thinking was.
Um, you know, I'm, I have. A space on both sides of the fence here. As I said last night at the Board of Finance meeting, we're on this precipice of growth and. The. We either grow or we stagnate, right? And the last two and a half years has been an opportunity and necessity for growth. But we're also facing down, you know, some of the biggest inflation numbers that we've seen in. Decades and decades and decades.
Yep.
So. From that standpoint. We were, we were trying to. Make the, make cuts where it wasn't two hundred dollars here and a thousand dollars there. And also just see, see how, how far we could go beyond, you know, thinking. More than that hundred and forty to hundred and sixty range, and we ended up. Coming up with this amount. And rather than. Come, going back last night at, you know, it was also ten thirty when we walked out of here, rather than going back and hashing this back again. We decided that it would be the best. Scenario to just bring you like this is the deepest we, we went, you know, we went. All the way. And, you know. Staving off the, you know, a big mill rate increase. I, I think I mentioned to Barbara last night, I had been to the grocery store in the last couple of days and. Just am flabbergasted and really worried. Going to the grocery store is a, a humongous undertaking financially. I'm going to the gas station is a humongous undertaking and I think about. You know, people's tax bills. And what will happen to them and it just. It's concerning.
Yes, it's concerning, but what you did last night is uneven. So, you know. You go after the registrar voters or the assistant tax collector. Um, if you're going to do that, then you go through every, every board, every, you know, you.
And we did.
Treasurer.
We absolutely did, but looking at. Looking at the data and what we had. And I didn't, we're not, I'm not going after anybody. I'm, I'm trying, I, I was trying to make. Cuts that made sense. And again, this is a starting point. It's, it's, it was to start the conversation. I didn't. I don't think it makes sense for us to go through every single department and say, well, we'll cut, you know, two hundred dollars worth of their supplies here and. We'll cut, you know, this little tiny, you know, the, the cuts by a thousand cuts. But if, you know, if that's what you all want to do, then we'll go. Department by department.
I, I, I mean, I, I for one, you know, appreciate this because I, I was doing the, the thousand cuts. I mean, you know, going through line by line and, you know, taking out a thousand here, even five hundred. Um, in various places, but this is, you know, I mean, I think this is a good starting point.
And they were not easy decisions to make, you know, shutting down the Welcome Center for five months in the winter and winter and spring. I. I don't know if I, I, I don't know if that's a good idea, but we needed to, that, you know, a hundred and forty, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars is a lot of money to. To cut out of a, you know, multimillion dollar budget and. It's going to be hard to get there in buckets of two hundred and fifty bucks.
I agree with that statement. Yes. Okay. All right.
The other, if I can just speak a little bit, the other approach that I had was to. Take away some of the things that really are unknown, which is what one of the Board of Finance members, Jason, talked about quite a bit last night. And. The EMS staffing hasn't been in place long enough for us to have a real trend, so I felt that. Flat or funding it at the level that they expect to use it at this year is a good place to start. And of course. If more money is needed during the year, then they go back to the Board of Finance. And. The emergency management, the cuts to that, there's a possibility we can look for some grants during the fiscal year to start working on that process. The other types of things, the registrars voters, I think I spoke to that already. They already had additional hours in their budget in this year for work that they. Weren't doing, so I didn't feel that if we brought them back to the same level as this year, that they were going to be stymied in any way as well as. Addressing the comment that the town clerk made that some of this. Election activity is now going to fall into her office anyway, additional activity. Same thing with the litigation. Yes, we do have some lawsuits that are coming down the pike. But they're unknown as to where they're going to go. So to circle back to Jason's comment. Let's budget what we know and not what we don't know. And so that was where my approach. Came from with what we did, Jean and I. I don't know if that's helpful, but.
I use that same approach in the same way. And there are a lot of things that I had very similar EMS. I had cuts to that. I looked at the same thing with the. Police and I also looked at. Litigation. Those were three items that I had down. But. If you're going to look at reducing the assistant tax collector back and not at. The additional hours for your clerk. That's lopsided in my mind.
Can I speak to that? Because we, we did look at the hours. We took. The average number of hours that the tax collector's clerk has put in this fiscal year and it averaged. Eight point nine hours a week. She's currently budgeted for ten hours a week, so she's not even utilizing. Eight point nine hours a week. She's currently budgeted for ten hours a week, so she's not even utilizing at this point. The ten hours a week that's budgeted. My office is budgeted for ten hours a week as well, and I'm averaging anywhere from fourteen to sixteen hours a week in clerk hours. So I'm. Above what I've been budgeted and I'm gonna run out of clerk hours. Which I've already discussed at the Board of Selectmen level. I mentioned it last night at the Board of Finance level. She, at her rate, she's not gonna run out of budgeted hours. So. In my approach, it was. Why would we, why would we budget for fifteen hours a week when they're not even using the budgeted ten hours a week? So. It's in. It's not fair to say that I didn't look at all the categories. We looked at every.
Every single department.
And we did averages and we looked at history. We looked at everything. And again, this is a suggestion, there's no. Requirement that you utilize all these cuts, but I would like to suggest that you look at this list and see where you actually agree and start there. And mark those ones as, okay, those are ones we will accept and then discuss the rest, toss them out, whatever you do. But I think.
I just wanna jump in for a quick public service announcement. There's a, it looks like there's another cell coming across. I'm at Town Hall. If. We lose power. Wait thirty minutes and we will do our best to get, get the meeting back started again. So if, if there's a point where. Where we, where that connection gets lost, just wait thirty minutes and we'll do our best to get back on. Sorry, go ahead, Barbara.
Oh, I, I think I'm done. I just wanted to. Give everybody a little bit of overview of how I approached the process. And the fact that we actually did look at everything and. We basically tried to take the cuts that were going to be the least impactful on every single department.
And at the same time, bigger chunks of money.
As well as satisfy the request.
So why don't we, um. Why don't we go through this? List? And just get an agreed upon where we are with this list and then Rufus, we can go through your listing or Glenn, whoever wants to go next. Because I know that we, you know, we've all devoted time to this. We're all. Looking at, you know, cut the rate. Amount, and it's very difficult. That are, does that sound good with you? Glenn Rufus, I see one nod.
Yep, I'm good.
So the ROVs, so that was a. Sorry, I'm getting a call from Homeland Security telling me that we have another cell coming through. So fifty-eight and fifty-nine. Again, this was. Currently. They're budgeted for each ROV for Sal and for Karen, three hours a week plus that one oh nine. Total hours. For election coverage. They were proposing four hours a week with a bolus of a hundred and twenty-five hours. Now we can, you know, if you want, we can, in a column here, we can split the difference. And start to sort of flesh out some. You know, middle ground, if that's what you want to do.
Um, I'd like to go back to what Barbara suggested and see if, because I hadn't even thought about. The ROV to that extent. I had reduced it some, but. Litigation. I agree that we could take a chunk off of litigation. I didn't have it at twenty-five thousand. But, um. You know, I, I had thought maybe twenty. I don't know where Glenn stands with that.
Yeah, that was, that was a big chunk for me. You know, I didn't know exactly what we should. Come to, but I had somewhere between ten and twenty. So, so this is not out of. Out of the norm here for me. I mean, I was definitely thinking about litigation a lot.
Okay.
So we could, we could agree on.
Do we want to change it to twenty? For sake of conversation?
For sake of conversation? Yes.
Change to twenty.
Great.
Um, same thing with the. Police protection. I agreed with, I think that would. Be okay with taking five out of that.
Okay.
I did not look at that, but if. I can take a quick look at it right now, but if you two are okay with that. Two fifty-seven. The five thousand? Okay.
The grant line. Two twenty-nine. Um.
Sure.
Chores. I. Thought we should reduce that down.
And I think that's a no-brainer because they submitted an ARPA request and I. As long as it's eligible, I think it makes sense to restore that funding via ARPA. So are we in agreement to? Take it down twenty-five hundred dollars?
Yes, I had the same thing.
And then what, the Greenwoods? Was the other one? Why did they go up? I don't remember.
Um, I think they just made their request came in. Higher. They've. Um, you know, honestly, I'm, I'd be hard pressed to reduce a. Mental health referral service. Right now.
I was just wondering, I can't remember what their rationale was.
Well, they provide mental health services and they have seen. A tripling of need during this period.
That, that's fine.
Yeah, I was gonna bring that up too, but Jean, I agree with you. So that's fine. The Cemetery Association, I had that on, that was on my list as well. At the same number, three thousand.
I mean, I looked at all three and said, you know, we're not, we're not going up on any other grants this year. So maybe that's what we should do.
The cemetery and the chore are. Have indicated that they are interested in applying for ARPA funding when it's available. So there's, that's the only difference between them and Greenwood's.
Right.
Okay.
Um, and, and the EMS staffing, I had also had major cut to.
Do you agree with the ninety-five thousand back to their current year, what they're projecting?
I wasn't quite at ninety-five, but I was like eighty-five, so.
And I think what. Solidified this number for us was that. There have been a couple of meetings where they've publicly said, we know. You know. EMS staffing and providing EMS, having an ambulance show up is something that needs to happen in the town of Kent, and if they needed more money, they can always come back to us.
Right.
Um, the, the interesting thing about this number is that how, how I did is that I, you know, went, went through the whole list and. You know, came up with like forty-four thousand, and then I did this one last because I knew this would be a big chunk, possibly the biggest. And the number I came up with was ninety-five thousand, seven fifty. Almost exactly, actually.
So again, I wasn't quite at ninety-five, but they can come back. So, I mean. If we went to ninety or ninety-five, I'm. Okay with that, taking that off.
Oops.
Uh, that you just broke the bank there.
Yeah. Column wasn't big enough. We've been kicking. This can down the road for three years now, plus, plus for emergency management. I mean, we're at such a high number. I think this is one of those places that we should. Try to restore something. Try to add something back in.
So that's a reduction that's twelve, two hundred. So that means that line would be seven thousand, eight hundred?
Yeah.
Twenty.
Yeah.
I had, I had this and Jean, thanks for the breakdown last night, the budget allocation for this. I, I had, I had it at ten thousand. Um, I, I, I looked at the VOG, the Everbridge. The dues, I thought we should be in there. I looked at the cert training. With some deployment expenses, but, but the data processing, the software, so, so my total. Was ten. For a reduction of ten. So that was what I was thinking.
And I, I was. Not quite as draconian as either one of you, but. You know. Ten. I mean, I. It's not that we don't need it, we do, but I think there are other ways of doing it. And I, I think the last couple of years was an aberration. So ultimately. Emergency management is gonna be. You know, back to, to storms and things like that. I think we're.
It's, but it's actually not because. Emergency management is where cybersecurity falls.
Wow.
Which if. I, I just keep reading just. More bad news about cybersecurity.
I think towns deal with that in different ways, you know, so most, most of the towns around here, if you look at their. Emergency management. It's peanuts.
Right, but is, I, I, I think that that logic is. Not necessarily of. Logic that we should adopt. I spent the day. Just on that cybersecurity training, I think it was last Thursday or the Thursday before and. There were many towns that were there and. We're all in the same boat. We all have to do the same thing. We all have to.
And that.
Move to multi-factor authentication, whether you're in town at two thousand or twenty thousand.
Regionalization is gonna be the answer for small towns. Where you, you put somebody in and, and they have a block of towns to do cybersecurity on. Otherwise, you're gonna break the bank on all the little. Things of towns. So that, that's.
What do we want to make this number?
Well, right now, we kind of all said. Ten thousand or more, so put ten thousand in there.
Just want to get Rick's thoughts on the halftime position.
I haven't been using it there, so if you think it should come out this year. Take it out. You taking any comments on the other parts of this or? Wait till the end.
You can comment on it. If you would like.
Right. The next one I want to comment on.
Welcome Center.
Yep.
Okay.
I think that should stay open and. If you're looking for that much of a cut, I think you should look at something like the land use position. Where you're guessing that maybe you're gonna need that extra salary. And. I don't know if it's. Other people have been thinking about it, but if all along, everybody's been saying that these positions are. Worth so much more for the market that. We have to raise the budgets up in anticipation, but. When it comes to salaries, you're not willing to raise it up to meet those numbers. So I think. Something like that anticipated. Say eight thousand or ten other land use and wetlands. And keep something like the welcome center open, which gets a lot of use.
I agree.
Again, this was another, you know. Big number that we could find, but it.
It's not welcoming.
It's not welcoming.
Is. You're, you're basically saying to our folks walking the streets and shopping. Oh, you know. Sorry, not during the winter.
Right, and there has been a rhythm that, you know, it's been open long enough that. You know, the, the people who are regular visitors know. That know where the welcome center is and the businesses. I think rely on it where they can, you know, they don't have to open up their restrooms that are often also their stock rooms or often their. You know, break rooms or what have you with the, you know, the confined space that they have.
I, yeah, I did not touch the welcome center at all.
I, I, I touched it, but not at that level. Just a, just a quick question. I mean, is, can we shave a little bit off of eight and still, can we? Shave less than eight and keep it open in the winter? Like, is there a minimum number?
So it's about, it's just under seventeen hundred dollars a month.
Okay.
I, I think we should, for sake of. Conversation at this level. Put it to zero and then, and then look at it as somewhere where we could say, okay, we'll close for January. When it's super, you know, if, if we're looking for seventeen hundred dollars somewhere.
Agreed. Yep, that's, that's good.
The park maintenance reduction, so this was a. Um. This was the drainage. I don't know if. Jared's on. Uh, I don't see him on.
Jared's not on, but I am.
Oh, hi, Lynn. I'm sorry.
Hi, it's all right. Um, as far as the drainage goes, I would ask you obviously to reconsider that. This drainage is for Kent Common. Um, and as you know, we've had numerous people. Either verbally or write letters regarding. You know, the, the path keeps getting really bad. Every time it rains, it's probably gonna. Be a mess after today. So we wanted to do that immediately rather than putting. That in the capital plan, which the capital plan money is for. Emery Park and the road that goes down to the bottom. Um, we're now faced with a new problem that we need to get. An engineered plan written up for Torrance Area Health Department for Emery Park and. Not really sure where those funds are gonna come from for an engineered plan. And we have some. Drainage going on there from the, from three forty-one that will need to be addressed. So. That's why we put that in there. And it is a one-time thing next year. That wouldn't be there. We would hope.
Thank you. I, I did look at this line and I can't put the number based on the notes. Um, so, so it said seven K for park maintenance and twenty-five K for drainage repairs. Um, which is roughly thirty-two. So I, I did have a reduction here, but only a reduction of sixteen thousand, not twenty-five. So what, when I.
Glenn, the seven thousand, I believe you're talking about is for the seasonal maintenance contractor?
Yep.
And then twenty-five for the drainage.
The twenty-five.
See, there's money in there for park maintenance from, that we have in there every year for those two things.
Yeah.
The seasonal maintenance contractor would, is every year. This will be our second year of using, using those.
So what are our thoughts? For this? Barbara is. We had. Talked very briefly last night about some cap. talked very briefly last night about some capital funds that have been sitting in the capital budget for quite some time, not specific to any department.
Well, that was one of the approaches that I took when I looked at all of this. There are funds in capital. Some have been there for a couple of years. Some are fully funded this year, but there's a real possibility that some of those funds can be redirected with approval from the board of finance to address some of these concerns that we put in as possible reductions on this sheet.
Seems like this would be, could be one of those places, although we're already at you know, this bottom number is already well over the 140, 160 range that they've asked for. So let's say forsake a conversation right now to get through this list. We put this at no reduction. So let's go back up to the top here. Do we want to, what do we want to do with these items up at the top? Do we want to sort of come to a halfway point? Do you want me to populate them in and see what the number looks like?
Let's, let's go halfway and see what it looks like.
3,500.
No, that's not right. What is right? Um. It's still digging pretty deep.
It is.
I don't think we have to go that deep. I mean, if you want to reduce registrar voters, you could probably take those numbers and have them again, you know, or you know, take out take out $4,500 total of those three.
That will take me a minute. But if we just have it again.
Yeah, have them again.
Have them again. Yeah.
That went the other way, didn't it?
Oh, sorry. Uh, oh, yes, it did. Um, no, it didn't. Cause we went, yeah, you're right. Um, sorry about that.
So you had like 3682 or something. 3582, 35
Yeah, that's right.
Ah. All right.
Then it would be 2023.
23. Yep.
Or 625.
Yep.
1842.
40, 43. Yeah.
Are you want me to keep going with tax?
43.
Oh, are we still, are we still going with the tax collector?
Yeah.
Yep.
Where do we want to head with litigation? Do you want to decrease that to 15,000? Reduction?
Um, I think we could because I think that may end up in a little bit more, I think. High watch will probably come back as well.
So I, I feel like this shows a, a really good faith effort on our part. It's 10,000, a little bit over 10,000 above their higher limit.
Yeah, I do have a question because I didn't have everything in front of me last night. What did board of finance? What line item did they look at to try to reduce from 9,000 to six?
Believe it was 220. We put that right here.
It was 10,000 to six and it was inland wetlands. Legal counsel.
All right, that they should not have done. That's still in our budget at this point.
Now they have the authority to line by line your budget.
They, they do. But not really at this point in the game. I, that was rude of them. So um, you know, we're, we're looking at reducing things. And I, I think we should leave it that add back to 10,000. Just to you know, I, I, I don't think they should have done that last night. They were coming back to, you know, really their purpose last night was to say we're uncomfortable with your proposed budget. We want you to get in line with this.
It is in there, you know, within their authority to do this. If, if we think converse, then I guess we can think the converse. Rick, did you want to say something? Sorry.
Yeah, I have a question for either Lynn or Barbara on the parking rec. On the 25. If that's such a necessity, how much money is left in this year's budget? Cause we now have summer camp or any of that last year and apparently we're not going to be this year because of the pool. So isn't there enough funding in this current budget to get some of that done without? One of the second time next year?
I don't have the the year to date figures in front of me, but I would assume that that's correct. Even if it isn't in their own budget, there's probably, if it's $25,000, we can probably find it elsewhere in the budget.
We have about $12,000 left in our in our maintenance line right now. Maybe a little less.
Well, I believe if we're going bottom line that as long as you don't get into the salaries, if there was other money within your bottom line to get that drainage worked on, then
That was about it. I think most of the other things have been used up. Very little balances except for that maintenance line, which has about 12 left. And that's subtracting the 7,000 for the seasonal maintenance contractor because we have not seen any invoices yet.
Well, I think Rick makes a good point. There is an opportunity to go back to the board of finance and maybe ask for a budget transfer to cover that expense in this year with the trade-off of taking it out of next year's proposal.
I don't know that we can get it done that quickly, but maybe I would like to. We haven't done RFPs or anything. We've had people walk around and start giving us ideas of what we need. But there'll be a lot of red tape before we get there.
Jean, did we lose Rufus?
Possibly.
I don't see him.
Yeah. Maybe you just lost power. So I plug that in over here. And it shows, here's the total of the reductions. And then the new budget with 170,734.
That's above and beyond what they asked.
Yep.
Do, do, do we need Rufus back on to continue here or what?
What's the Well, we have a court, we saw a quorum, but I was, here he comes. I was hoping that that would happen.
Well.
Hey. Electrical hiccup?
Yeah.
Okay. You didn't miss anything. We had talked a little bit about trying to see how much was left in this year's park maintenance line to try to fund that $25,000 in this budget. Um, so we wouldn't have to in next year's budget. But Lynn did remark that she wasn't sure if we would be able to get the project completed by 6:30.
And we still have to fix the shed down in the field. And that'll have to come out of there. We need to replace picnic tables at Emory Park if we get everything done up there. That, well, that would be next year's money.
We're, we're also facing, I don't know Lynn, if you talked about the fact that board of health wants us to get an engineered study of the Emory Park pool. So
We can't count on the ARPA funds. It would be nice, but we won't know that. And any other funds we have for drainage are five years out. So
That's all true. I still think there's an opportunity to speak to the board of finance about what their preference is. Because if there's going to be money left in your compensation lines, they have the authority and discretion to allow you to use that for drainage. So
I obviously, especially after last night's meeting was not including any compensation.
Right. Well, but my, I guess my point is that there's still an opportunity to have a discussion with them regarding this. So
Okay.
Just want to point that out.
That would be fine.
So how are, how are we feeling about this 17734?
I think that's generous.
So do I.
At this stage of the game. And there, there were other things in there that I looked at, but I, I wasn't sure about them. You know, some of them were like, you know, 500 to $1,000 here and there, but some of them were, you know, questions for Rick, but I don't I wasn't expecting to go this deep. You know, originally I was thinking they wanted 140 at a minimum. If we went to 150, 155, we'd be in a range where they would know we'd made a good effort. So this is bit of a bonus of over and above.
It is. Could, could I say this? It's, it's not, it's not a reduction. It's just a slight addition, but I think it would be it would be appreciated. Just to throw it out to both of you here, line 312, the senior center program. It's, it's $500 there. Is there any way we could just bump that up 1,000 or 1,500? To help out the senior center program? Based on what we've done today? We could look at reducing something else if we, if we need, if we want to keep it 170.
Uh, that definitely would be appreciated.
I agree.
Um. I mean, I was so that would I, I think people are waiting. Some more desperate than others, but they're waiting to see that we follow through and, and start making the senior center reality. Ultimately, I'd like to see it more than, you know, a few meals a week or a weekly meal. It really should be a place that provides a variety of different programs, educational or, or social in nature. And I, I just COVID really I saw it in New Melford at the senior center there where the isolation changed people. And not for the better. So anything we can do to provide something for a large section of our population, actually. We're all getting a little bit older. Um, I think would be good.
So the, their ask to us was to reduce. So we just want to make sure that we sort of stay on that mission task.
Sure. Just to, I didn't know if I should bring it up at this meeting or, but
We, we could, um, bring this 17734 back to the board of finance with a note that says in, you know, in, as we made our way through the budget. We did notice that the and agreed that the senior center line item seemed to be underfunded and we agreed that we would bring it forth to the board of finance that we would like to see that number increased.
Okay.
So I'm, I, I would like to do this and then, um, um, if we're ready, I'd like to make a motion to accept the budget reduction plan with changes made as presented to the board of selectmen.
There's no reason we can't also Jean include that one line of increase.
Yeah. So I, I made, I made the motion. So let's
Yep.
Second it so we can get to a discussion.
Second.
Fantastic. So I don't disagree. I think it's good to make two separate motions so that when I bring this back to the board of finance, I can say we did what you asked, right? They asked us to do a specific thing, reducing. But we also realize, realize when we went through this, that we all agreed that this was underfunded and we can even make a motion to that effect. So that it's in the minutes and it's, you know, a public record that we all agreed, which we do. So that it's in the minutes and it's, you know, a public record that we all agreed, which we do, that that line item is underfunded.
Yes, I agree.
So I would do that motion first. And say, that was the first thing that we dealt with and then here's, here's our reduction.
Right, so we're in the middle of this motion, which I'd like to just continue forward with. And I, I will amend the motion to include the number so that we have that in the minutes directly. So I will make a motion to amend my motion to include 170,734 dollars. And I just need, we need to vote on that amendment, so I need the, the original second or which I think was Glenn to second this sort of sub motion.
Second.
Okay, so.
Guys, then, then, then we're going to add something in, so you know, that, that doesn't make sense.
No, all I'm doing is including the number that we're all agreeing on. Because I didn't include it in the, in the original motion and I'm amending my motion. So we have to vote on the amendment and then we vote on the main motion.
But the thing is, Gene, if we have agreed to add some money to one line item, that changes that line, the bottom number by the whatever the amount is.
Right, and.
So we're still going to be reducing it. And just should be one, you know, add, add the positive, one line, we're increasing by X dollars and here's our reduction. These are the lines that have been changed. Make it one motion. I, I otherwise you're going to have to make another motion for another bottom line of our reduction.
But right now, the, the the task that we were given was to reduce the budget.
Which we're doing and we can raise a line item in that reduction effort. Do it in one motion.
I think we're I think it doesn't matter that much and we're in the middle of a motion. We're actually in the middle of a subsidiary motion, so I'd like to just take care of this. And then you're going to vote against it.
You know.
Rufus, when, if you want to make a mo, if you want to make motions, then I encourage you to make motions. But when I, when I want to, I'm trying to move the process along. Let me finish, please. When I'm trying to move the business of the, of the board along, so I make a motion, but then and we're already in, into the second and the second of the subsidiary motion, I explained why I wanted to do two separate motions. Nobody balked at that. But now we're in halfway down this rabbit hole and we're, and you're barking at it. It's.
I'm barking at it because you're going to make a motion that we're going to change if we agree to add to a line item and that changes the bottom line of the total reduction. You're spinning your wheels.
Our task.
We only have to have one motion at the end of this, that we're going to reduce the budget by X dollars by these changes. And one of them happens to be an addition.
And we had that opportunity to have that conversation like three minutes ago.
So vote against this motion. And then let's do it in one motion. Board of Finance doesn't care whether we're adding to a line item or what. They're going to look at all the line items and say, oh, they reduced, boom, 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 boom.
Oh, they added. So I'm going to, I'm going to call for a vote of the subsidiary. Rufus, we need to just move forward because we're, we're in the same rabbit hole that Joyce asked us to hop out of. So I'm trying to, to get us to conduct business in a more linear and sequential way. So we need to vote on the subsidiary motion that added the 170,734 dollars to the main motion. And I'll call for a vote on that. All those in favor of the subsidiary motion, say aye, because it's tough to see everybody.
I'm against it.
I.
You just.
Although, and hang on Rufus, hang on. So we have two in favor, any, are those, anyone not in favor?
I'm not in favor.
Okay, one again.
Wasted motion.
The subsidiary motion carried. Now we're going to vote on the main motion.
Which is what again? So can we?
The motion, the main motion is to accept the budget reduction plan for a total of 170,734 dollars with changes made as presented to the BOS.
Okay.
But we agreed, I thought we just agreed to add $1,000 or whatever the, to that line item that Glenn brought up.
We.
And so that changes the bottom line of this. So this is not the right number for what we want to do.
Can't go backwards.
Vote it down and then redo a motion. Looking at all the changes that we made today, Gene, not just the negative ones.
I'm, I fully understand what you're saying, Rufus. I, when I said what I said before, that I, that I would like to see two separate motions, it was so that we could stay on the, the request that the Board of Finance made of us.
We are, Jean.
Can I?
We're, and we're way beyond what they did anyway. So you're, you're just adding unnecessary votes to this.
But when Rufus, when all of this extra conversation, instead of saying to me four minutes ago now, you know what, hang on, I think we should do one motion and I'll type it up quick. I'm all for that, absolutely. But y'all don't do that, so I'm doing that. And, and if y'all aren't going to do, put the motions forth, I'm going to put the motions forth and this is the motion that I put forth. So I'd like to vote on this motion. Motion is to accept the budget reduction plan for a total of 170,734 dollars with changes made as presented to the BOS. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye, because I can't see everybody. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
Aye.
Rufus is opposed, the motion carries. Now I'd like to make another motion that, let's talk about the motion so I don't get it wrong, so that we're all in agreement of what the motion is. So it could say something like.
Change the number that we just did. This is a waste of time.
I, I've got a question. So we have another special meeting on Tuesday, correct?
If we wrap things up today, we can cancel that. We, we scheduled two because the timeframe was so tight.
Okay, because I was going to say, I mean, you know, talking about one light item might be way too much for a special meeting, but if, if we're too heated right now, we could wait until Tuesday to resolve this. Or we can continue right now and get rid of that meeting on Tuesday. The Board of Finance meets on the 20th.
Yep.
Okay, so, so, so when we, when we present to them the reduction here, and we're also, at the same time, we're going to say, we would like to, to add to a line, so that's going to happen before their next meeting. So we should do that now then?
Yes, so the motion could be to recommend to the Board of Finance an increase to the line 312 senior center to $1,000, if that's where we were going to double that.
That's where we're going. So I would make a motion that we rescind the previous motion and adjust the wine item total reduction to 169,734 and add $1,000 to line 312 in the budget. Or by adding $1,000.
So we're, we're, I'm not going to second that motion. Sorry Rufus. So if there's no second, it's not a motion. So I would like to make a motion to recommend to the Board of Finance an increase to the line 312 senior center to $1,000.
Second.
Thanks Glenn. Do we need any more discussion on this? Hearing none? Can we vote by signify by saying aye, because I can't see everybody? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstaining? Rufus, did you, I need to hear a vote.
I said aye to original.
In favor?
I was in favor, but.
I can't see why I'm asking and I couldn't hear you.
Bottom line is they asked us to reduce the budget. And doesn't matter whether we added or detracted. So you just made two motions when you only needed one. You know, it just doesn't make sense to do it the way you did it.
So I will PDF this document and send it off to the board and to, to Joyce for the minutes and to the Board of Finance with an email to Nancy and then plan to be at their meeting next Wednesday. It is 6:06 according to Apple, I believe. And I'll take a motion to adjourn. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you Glenn, all those in favor. Aye. Thank you. Thank you all. Thanks for the conversation and hopefully.